Good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask the city clerk to call the meeting to order. And please.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent at this time, but we do expect him this evening. Vice Mayor Gatewood will be absent this evening. Mayor Pulapati.
Here.
I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting, video recording, and playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, February 6th at 6:00 PM and Sunday, February 9th at 6:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of the meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy is also available from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
I'd like to ask Taysha to come up and give us a pledge of allegiance, if you can come up to the podium right up front. And then I'd like to request everybody to remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to all.
This is the first time that I've done this here. I've done it at other cities, but just may I share just a short thought before the invocation? You know, Rancho Cordova is a very special city, and I hope that everybody here knows a little bit about the meaning of it, and there's a sign right up there that says, "All-American City." And I'm one of the pastors from Oasis Church, which meets here. What's so significant is that I am in this room, we meet in here every Sunday, to pray for you people. Now, is that a bad thing?
No.
I don't think so. That's a good thing. So it's nice to actually see the faces of the people that we're praying for. I want to give one just small, significant thing. I know I'm a preacher and I'm not, don't worry, don't panic here. But I had a dream about Rancho Cordova, and I saw the number 20. And so that fascinated me, so I looked up the number 20, I Googled it, and it meant, one of the meanings meant, "Answered prayer." How many would like to have the feeling that your prayers would be answered? Answered prayer. So after I shared that in the church, I was walking down the hallway out here on Sunday morning, and there's this beautiful painting there, and there is a picture of City Hall. And would you believe, sitting above the picture is the number 20? Now, would that excite you a little bit, if you had a dream about the number 20? And then you saw the 20 right above City Hall, "Answered prayer." I'd like you just kind of take, take a hold of that for just a moment. So let me pray what I felt like God told me to say. I first want to say, Lord, that you would bless not only the city council and the mayor and everyone that is in this room, but, Father, I pray that their families would be blessed. Lord, we cannot do what we need to do without our families being blessed. So I pray for a blessing upon your families and everyone that's here in this meeting. And, Father, I pray for something that transcends knowledge. I pray for wisdom, and I pray for unity. I pray a blessing now upon everyone here, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you for letting me do that. God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, it's wonderful to see so many youth out here today. We're going to start with presentations, so I'd like to ask Randy K. Stevens to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege to be here with members of the American River Bike Patrol and our Cordova High School Velo Lancers, as they present you with information about their recently accomplished program that is funded through the Cordova Community Enhancement Investment Fund. I'd like to invite Rich Fowler, Vic Massenhoff, and the student members of the CHS Velo Lancers.
Well, I'd like to report, first of all, that we have 20 people here. Pastor, did you hear that? He's busy. So my name is Rich Fowler, and I am a member of the American River Bike Patrol and the Cordova High Junior Lancer Program. As you can see, there are a number of us, 20, here tonight, there may be more, but at least 20. We are here simply to say thank you. We are here to say thank you to the staff, Randy K. and her staff, for their support and help to get the proposal ready. We're here to say thank you to the mayor and council for your support and funding of the program. We're here to say thank you, actually, to the people of Rancho Cordova who make this fund possible. So we are here and wanted to introduce the, the people who are part of this program, the students at the high school, and they want to make a brief presentation to you. So please go on up, and students, take your bikes up.
Is this like court? Do we have to ask to approach?
Yes, ask for permission. May we approach the bench? So on the 9th of November, 29 students started at Folsom Lake and rode all the way to Discovery Park, 32 miles. And there are some pictures, that was the culmination of a 10-week training program that started on the 7th of September. And so a lot of the students are here, but this young man, JB, would like to say a couple of words and make a presentation. JB?
JB, can you go over there? Thank you.
I would like to say thank you that this program was funded. It's more than just going out and riding a bike. It's, you build a lot of relationships with people, and I met a lot of people who I really care about now, who I probably would never have met. And it taught me to, it taught me riding a bike's more than just going out and riding. It's learning so much, and I just really enjoyed it all over, and it made me find a love for riding my bike, and I really love going out, and I love helping people, and it's inspired something in me that I don't think I would have ever had access to, which I really enjoyed.
I'll say thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and go up and make the presentation picture.
Actually, we can come down. If you, do you want to hand it to us? Okay.
We'd like to get a picture of all of us with you all, too. Come on up, you guys.
How to get the bikes in?
Oh, yeah, we got the bike in front here. Bring it over here.
Yeah, that looks great.
Hold the other one out, on the other side of the photo.
Excellent.
A little bit. A little bit of experience.
Just take it off.
All right, here we go. One, two, three, four, and thank you so much.
These are the bikes you all bought for us. 29 of them. Trek shot gave us a really good discount. Hard to explain.
Yeah. 20.
I do want to just say in leaving that we are going to apply again, and we have plans to expand the program for next year, so we will see you again. Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Thank you, guys, for being here. That's awesome. Very cool program.
Next, we're going to go to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. City clerk, can you announce the public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Helen Waylon Bishaw.
Hello, I'm Helen Waylon Bishaw, live in the Tiffany area. Pet peeve, mics, you're not talking into them, it's very difficult for us to hear your comments up here. That's my one thing. Other thing I have is with all these fires and stuff that we've had in Southern California, I was wondering what the city has in place in case of an emergency evacuation, whether it be a fire in an area, will the hydrants be able to operate with enough pressure to put out the fire? And another really daunting issue is with all these electric cars, the Teslas, what action plan do we have in place for all the stranded cars, because they're not going to be able to power their electric cars if we lose power? I know, something for you guys to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to council reports.
Interesting that we have Metro Fire here tonight.
Yeah, maybe you could later give us update on that. I will move on to council reports, starting with councilmember Budge.
Thank you. So I did attend the service for Bob Arianas, our late, wonderful Rancho Cordova resident, who was a member of the Sister Cities Committee, and it was really sweet, beautifully attended, really a great thing. I gave a resolution to the Rotary Club of Rancho Cordova for their charter night, and we had a very uneventful regional transit meeting. We had a very nice meeting this morning of the SBTC JPA. David, we missed you. And Rancho Cordova was officially adopted as a member. We had a very educational city retreat, but I have to say that the highlight of my entire last two weeks was the grand opening for the North State Nursing College Nursing Training Simulation Center. I have to tell you, that was absolutely fascinating. For all the techie people in the room, you would have been amazed at the robots and the way in which they are simulated, or they could be programmed to simulate a variety of different, different medical emergencies. They even have a robot that is programmed to give birth. It was absolutely fascinating, and for anybody who, who wasn't there that night, or Micah, you and Siri definitely should get a tour over there. It was just fascinating. And I'm thrilled that we have this kind of asset, educational asset, here in Rancho Cordova. It's really a very unique facility.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just returned from the National League of Cities Executive Committee meeting in DC. It's a very interesting time to be in DC with the new presidential administration and the organization having to adapt itself to the, you know, the priorities and, and issues with this president as opposed to the previous, and this congress as opposed to the previous. So it's always a very interesting, interesting retreat. This is the one where we sort of set priorities for the organization in the coming year, and you'll be hearing more about those, I think, in, in coming weeks, what, what sort of focus NLC will have this year. I went to my very first Air Quality Management District meeting last week, and it's an interesting body. I have a lot to learn about it, but happily, in the very first meeting, I was able to correct some data that was presented, so I felt like a scientist being there. That was, that was fun. Siri, you did a great job at the mayor's lunch, January lunch. That was just, what, a week and a half ago? Something like, seems longer, because I've been, I traveled, but yeah, that was really a, a great job. And unfortunately, by showing up to her speech in January, I broke the record I had set for attendance at the January mayor's lunch. So if I just stayed home, we would have been tied, but I had to see Siri do that. So congratulations, Siri, well done. Just for the record, she had 152 attendees, I had 151. Yeah, well done. And Siri and I attended, what's the organization name?
IAS.
IAS?
Indian Association of Sacramento.
Okay, that's what I, all right, that's what I wrote down, but for some reason, it didn't look right to me. We attended a meeting of the Indian Association of Sacramento, which they have a lot of subgroups that are members, but it was a really great, really great food, actually, and really great presentations, and gives you a real understanding of how impactful the Indian community is in not only Rancho Cordova, but in the region, and also some of the different ethnic and state groups, state-level groups, you would say? That, that are part of IAS. So we, of course, have been a long-term partner here, and turns out that those state organizations, state-level or state sort of organized, it's sort of like if you had an association of Wisconsin Americans, an association of Illinois Americans, it's a little bit like that, except they have much more culture tied into being in those two states, much more than just, you know, who their university mascots are. It's, it's, you know, religion to some extent, and language and food, and, and overall culture. So it was quite a bit of fun, and I look forward to doing that again and to continuing our partnership with the Indian community.
Be careful what you sign up there.
Yeah, I know, I have like seven other, seven other invitations already. All right, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Little?
Nothing really for me today. We had a great retreat. Highlight for me was going into the police live room, and there was an ongoing operation in my neighborhood, sounds about right. But it was a good time, and glad to sit in a room with the whole staff and everyone and just connect, and we have a great year ahead of us.
Thank you. So my report, it was a really good turnout at the luncheon. We did attend the Indian Association of Sacramento that had, they were celebrating the Republic Day event, which calls for all the different groups to come out and celebrate. So it's kind of the many states that, as councilmember Sander mentioned, that, you know, they come out and celebrate its unity and diversity. Also attended the kite festival that was organized by the Sacramento Telangana Association, and that was a pretty good turnout. Randy K. Stevens was also there at that event, and I told the crowd there that, you know, that's the person that they need to reach out to for any micro grants, so she was pretty popular there. Also, I handed out certificates here at City Hall to Suvida Association, they kind of organized, Kenny High School actually gave out a call for asking for sweaters and jackets during the winter, and they went out and organized 500 sweaters, jackets, and cold-weather gear to hand out to the students and families at Kenny High School, so to recognize them. I gave out certificates here at City Hall over the weekend. And as councilmember Little mentioned, we did have the visioning session, that's where we went into the Real-Time Information Center and saw, we were just looking at how drones work in our city, but we got to see real-time about an incident taking place, and also got to see how people are maintaining their backyards, so councilmember Sander took note of what, you know, we can proceed with that. But it was a really good one on how technology is evolving in our city and how crime is going down year over year, and that's something also that I mentioned in my speech during the luncheon, that we are taking care of the city, and there are many ways that we're looking at you, Rancho Cordova. And that's my report. Next up, Micah, for the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates and, and items to discuss today. One is, we had the sold-out Rancho Cordova Chamber Business Outlook last Friday, which the mayor had a nice intro on, and also we had Amanda Norton and Edgar Medina that presented infrastructure and innovation, and really getting the kind of groups excited about what is happening and what is coming to the city of Rancho Cordova, so I really want to thank Amanda and Edgar for working on that and participating in that on that day. And then also, just to give a heads up, there is a letter that will be in all of the mailboxes in the next couple days for a citywide letter that's being sent, that's talking about kind of a welcome to the new year, but also highlighting past, past year's efforts and activities and accomplishments, but also a letter talking about community resources and upcoming events like our general plan conversations and the Bike Master Plan and all the other things that go along with that. So look for that, everybody, in their mailboxes. And then also, last but not least, I will say, the pro-youth group that's here tonight, I had the pleasure of speaking to them last Monday, and I either want to say they're here because they wanted to hear more, or, you know, they're just checking up on what I said, if it's true or not. So welcome to the pro-youth team that's, that's here today.
Yeah, I'd like to know at the end of it, do they still want Stacy's job, or do they, you know, kind of like our job a little to want to try to do it? Because every year, they like Stacy's job the best. With that, we will move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to pull? City clerk, any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Seeing none, I will move approval of items 13.1 through 13.5.
I did the second.
Okay, very good, thank you. I didn't know if you were asking for one, or if you were the second. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pulapati. Roll call, councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent public hearing items, and there are no public, sorry, there are no consent public hearing items. Moving on to public hearing items, and there are no public hearing items, so I will move on to regular calendar item, and ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
The subject is Planning Commission Regular Members Nomination and Selection.
I'll ask Darcy for the staff update here.
Good evening, Mayor Pulapati, members of the council. Darcy Geller with Community Development. Before you this evening is the appointment of, actually, three of our vacant four regular members, since Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. So what we will do is ask for the three council members that have nominations to make those this evening, and then we will reschedule his for another date. So we do have the four vacancies, I'll just go over the terms. Vice Mayor Gatewood's term expiration would follow his term of office, which would expire December of 2026. The remaining three follow those term offices, which would expire December 2028. The selection process, just as a reminder, is we do do an application process, and each council member with a vacancy listed will nominate one person from the applications that were attached to your agenda, keeping in mind a second in case that there are duplicates. And then all nominations do require a majority vote by the council. We provided you a map previously when you've done selections, so we wanted to provide you that map again, just so you could see where the existing planning commissioners currently reside in specific neighborhoods. Those are shown by their names in black or a number in black, and then the applicants are shown in red.
Darcy, could we ask you to, just for the benefit of our pro-youth students, could we ask you to list the qualifications to be on the planning commission?
Sure. The qualifications to be on a planning, on the planning commission is a resident of the city, 18 years of age, and the third one is, I'm, it's skipping my voice here. What is the third one? You put me on the spot, councilmember Budge. You should know this, right? Let's see here.
Well, we don't know either, so don't.
I'm going to find it, now, now that you asked, I'm going to find it here. Oh, and shall not be an elected or appointed official of another public entity, so that's the third qualification.
Good point. Okay, so anybody who's 18 and lives in Rancho Cordova is welcome to apply.
Yes, they are.
I will say, the, there is a, not an, it's an expectation or a hope and dream that the two at large have additional experience and qualifications in the field as well as, as part of the direction that we're seeing before.
I, I've been before enough planning commissions, I completely agree with that, with that concept.
Yes, and we do have a lot of well-qualified applicants that did apply for the positions in this round. So what we did learn is we did have some, a few lessons learned in this process, because this is the first time we've had a pretty significant change in terms of office for the council. So what we've looked at is, we're going to look at some future code changes to try to streamline the process for renominations of existing planning commissioners that maybe they have a city council member that wants to reappoint them. So we're going to look at some language to build into the code that would make that process easier in the future, so they wouldn't have to wait for a new application process to open up. We'll also, what we periodically do is take a look at Chapter 2 and see if there's any other cleanups that we need to do to the planning commission section. So with that, after the brief summary, we're looking for the three council members to make their nominations, and then follow it up with a majority vote. Includes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so next steps, do we just nominate, or?
Yeah, so the next step is each council member, and I can call on you directly if, if that would be easiest, can make your nomination, and then call for a majority vote on that particular one, and then we can move to the next one.
So just, just cleaning up, we're going to clean up this process, though.
We are.
The current, yeah, the current language is really awkward.
Yes.
So for example, I'm continuing in office, but my planning commissioner was like dismissed and has to reapply.
Correct. Yes, we're going to clean that up to make the process a little bit easier. Lesson learned on this first time around.
Right.
So with that, I think what I'll do first is call on councilmember Little to make your nomination, and then call for a majority vote on that one.
Yeah, sure. I alluded to her a few weeks ago, and I'm sticking with it, and I'm appointing, or sorry, I'm nominating Rihanna Reiman.
Before we do the vote, Stacy, do we need to open public comment before the votes, or?
We should have public comment.
Yes.
And we don't have any public comment. So, is there anybody from?
Stacy, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Roll call for councilmember Little's?
We should have a motion and a second.
Okay.
I motion to consider my, my nominee.
Second?
Is that how it's done? Okay. I'm still learning these Robert's rules.
So roll call, councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Okay, the next one, councilmember Sander?
Move the appointment of Lee for shot?
Second.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
And lastly, Mayor Polapati?
I nominate Sarinder Deverpally to be my planning commissioner.
Second.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Mayor Polapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent.
Okay, that's all we need, and we'll reschedule the fourth appointment for the next available meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 16.2, I'll ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of improvement area number two of the city of Rancho Cordova, the Ranch Community Facilities District, number 2021-1, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions.
I'll ask Michelle for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Michelle McGay, Finance Manager. The item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds on and for the Ranch Court of, the Ranch Community Facilities District 2021-1, improvement area number two. The CFD was formed in 2021 for the purpose of funding facilities and facility-related impact fees within the development community. And the financing-related resolution before you this evening does approve the sale of the bonds in an amount not to exceed $13 million. And the special taxes issued by the CFD are secured solely by special tax revenues collected within the boundaries of the improvement area number two and are not debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Council, do you have any comments, questions? Move approval of the item?
I'll second.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Mayor Polapati?
Yes. I will move on to agenda item 16.3 and ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
Appointment of real property negotiator, city manager, Micah Runner, and city attorney, Adam Lindgren, for the following properties and assess their parcel numbers.
I'll ask Adam Lindgren for the staff report.
Do you want me to read all the parcel numbers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is a prerequisite to going into closed session for the first time for the potential acquisition or transaction involving these stated properties. There are a number of APNs all located on Fumoyer, Folsom Boulevard, and this will allow us to conduct our closed sessions regarding these matters.
Okay, any public comment on this one?
There's no public comment.
Council, any comments or questions?
Hearing none, I'll move approval of the item.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is absent. Mayor Polapati?
Yes. I'll move on to agenda item 17 and ask if there are any future agenda items?
You know, I, it's not really a future agenda item, but I'm wondering, the state of California has enacted a new law requiring a specific distance that people park from intersections for the protection of pedestrians and whatnot. And in our neighborhood in particular, it's, it's really, for me, it's an issue. People park right at the corner and you really cannot see down the road. So I'm wondering if Public Works could just provide us an update at some point, or Public Works or PD could provide us an update with, with what they're going to, what they're going to do about that. I know the other issue maybe for Public Works and PD is the fact that regional transit is now enforcing a do not park in the bus stop zone thing. So, but if, if we could just kind of get an update about that, that would be great.
Sure, we'd be happy to give you some information on that.
Thank you. And before we adjourn to closed session, I'd really like to thank all of you from Pro Youth for coming out to City Hall. You actually seem to be a lucky charm. We've never had a meeting go to closed session this early. So it's not the norm. So I'd like to invite you to come on to city council more often. Bring any concerns, you know, lost dog, pet, pothole that you see to our attention. We would really love to hear from you.
You're either lucky or unlucky. Choosing tonight is your night, however you want to look at it. Usually, we have more interaction and do more stuff than this.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to do a closed session because we have to talk about some negotiation matters regarding real estate. That's the item we just passed. We have to do that behind closed doors because if we did it in public, anyone else who might want to buy or sell us property or buy the same property we're trying to buy or think about buying would know about it. So we have to do that privately. Then eventually, when we decide what we're doing, we'll actually come out, not tonight, but some point in the future, it'll, it'll be released, what we actually decided and what actions the city took.
Yeah. And I will be speaking to you all on the last Monday of this month, which I think might be the 28th, so.
Let me tell you, Councilmember Budge has all the history of Rancho Cordova. So you know, you want anything, you want to know anything about Rancho Cordova, like way before you were even born? Please ask Councilmember Budge.
And she might give you homework, just fair warning. Many different ways she could go with that.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if I should approach the mic because I'm not on the agenda.
That's okay, you can.
Come right up. Because we can't hear you otherwise.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting me up here to speak. My name is Nick Solis, representing Pro Youth and Families. And with me tonight are youth from my Youth at City Council program that I facilitate here. But I did want to thank you all for creating a welcoming space, inviting our young leaders to observe, and also to notating some extra details in the middle of your discussions here so that our young leaders here could be more aware of what it is you guys are discussing. So I appreciate you guys being truly welcoming, very youth-friendly, and doing a lot of great work for the community. So on behalf of the entire program, thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move to, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to closed session.